Namavom Vishnu Padaya Vishnu Prishthaya Bhutale Shrimate Bhaktivedanta Swaminidinamine Namastey Sarasvathadeve Gauravani Pracharinay Jay Shri Krishna Jay Tanya Prabhu Nityananda Shri Advaita Gadadhara Shri Vasadigor Bhaktavrindha Hare Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Rama Hare Rama 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Rama Hare Rama 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Rama Hare Rama 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Rama Hare Rama 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Rama Hare Rama 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Rama Hare Rama 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Rama Hare Rama 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Rama Hare Rama 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Rama Hare Rama 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Rama Hare Rama 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Rama Hare Rama 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Rama Hare Rama 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Rama Hare Rama 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Rama Hare Rama 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Rama Hare Rama 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Rama Hare Rama 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Rama Hare Rama 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Rama Hare Rama 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Rama Hare Rama 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Rama Hare Rama 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Rama Hare Rama 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Rama Hare Rama 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Rama Hare Rama 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Rama Hare Rama 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Rama Hare Rama 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Rama Hare Rama 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Rama Hare Rama 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 Hare 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 Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Rama Hare Rama 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 Hare Hare Nitigor Haribo 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 Nitigor Haribo 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 Nitigor Haribo Nitigor premanande hari hariho jagat guru chila vupadki chai
Hare Krishna, thank you Ramashakaran Prabhu, Minaaksharada Mataji, thank you so much. So we have His Holiness Bhakti Arjapritivadarma Maharaj with us. So we welcome Maharaj by loudly chanting Hare Krishna Mahamantara. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna Hare Hare. Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram Hare Hare. Welcome Maharaj.
Hare Krishna Prabhu, Hare Krishna. So then today we will continue with the with the Uparishamrita and yeah, I hope that that's where we ended. The conclusion is that only when we talk about devotion service to the Supreme Personality of God can we refrain from useless nonsensical talk. We should always endeavor to use our speaking power solely for the purpose of realizing Krishna consciousness. So yeah, we discussed about it. If there are some specific questions, maybe let me know if you should stop and discuss. Otherwise then that's more like than the summary now of the first verse. As for the agitations of the becarrying mind, they are divided in two divisions. The first is called Avirodhapriti or unrestricted attachment and the other is called Virodhayuptakrodha, anger arising from frustration. Adherents to the philosophy of the Maya bodies believe in the fruitive results of the karma bodies and believe in plans based on materialistic desires are called Avirodhapriti. Jhanis, karmis and materialistic planmakers generally attract the attention of conditioned souls. When the materialists cannot fulfill their plans and when their devices are frustrated, they become angry. Frustration of material desires produces anger. So yeah, we also discussed about the karma, krudha, lobha, moha, mada and matsalya. Similarly, the demands of the body can be divided into three categories. The demands of the tongue, the belly and the genitals. One may observe that these three senses are physically situated in straight line as far as the body is concerned and that the bodily demands begin with the tongue. If one can restrain the demands of the tongue by limiting its activities to the eating of prashat, the urges of the belly and the genitals can automatically be controlled. In this connection, Shabaktino Thakur says: "Shari ra avidyajal jodendriyataheka jivaifala visaya sagre dharamadey jihvayati lobha moyas sudurmati thakejuta kathina samstare krishna paradhyamoy kari bar jihvajoy swaprashat anadilobhay sahit anamritapao radha krishna gunagao premedaka shri chetanayitai." Oh Lord, the material body is a lump of ignorance and the senses are networked path leading to death. Somehow or other, we have fallen into the ocean of material sense enjoyment and all of the senses, the tongue, is the most voracious and uncontrollable. It is very difficult to conquer the tongue in this world. But you, dear Krishna, are very kind to us. You have sent this nice prashat to help us conquer the tongue. Therefore, let us take this prashat to our full satisfaction and glorify your lordship. Shri Chitana Krishna and Krishna, Shri Chitana and Krishna and in love call for the help of Lord Chetanayam and Prabhu Nityananda. There are six kinds of rasa's tastes and if one is agitated by any one of them, he becomes controlled by the urges of the tongue. Some persons are attracted to the eating of meat, fish, crabs, eggs and other things produced by semen and blood and eaten in the form of dead bodies. Others are attracted by eating vegetables, crepes, spinach or milk products. But all of the satisfaction of the tongue's demands, such eating for sense gratification includes the use of extra quantitative spices like chili and tamarind is to be given up by Krishna conscious person. The use of pan, haridaki, beetles nuts, various spices used in pan making, tobacco, LSD, marijuana, opium, liquor, coffee and tea is indulged in to fulfill illicit demands. If we can practice accepting only remnants of food offered to Krishna, it is possible to get free from Maya's victimization. Vegetables, grains, fruits, milk products and water are proper foods to offer to the Lord as Lord Krishna himself prescribes. However, if one accepts prashat only because of its palatable taste and thus eats too much, he also falls prey to trying to satisfy the demands of the tongue. Shri Chetanayam Apparum taught us to avoid very palatable dishes even while eating prashat. If we offer palatable dishes to the deity with the intention of eating such nice food, we are involved in trying to satisfy the demands of the tongue. If we accept the invitation of a rich man with the idea of receiving palatable food, we are also trying to satisfy the demands of the tongue. So yeah, that's a very few nice points. So we are trying to we are trying to engage the tongue in then control the tongue. Controlling the tongue, then we do it by eating only what's allowed and not just only that but we also accept only prashat. So everything is offered to Krishna. So therefore, when we eat, then not only do we satisfy our tongue, our belly, but at the same time, we also get the spiritual benefit by eating prashat. So therefore, prashat is actually the mercy of the Lord because he is mercifully coming in the formal prashat. So we can still satisfy our senses and then spiritually progress. It's prashadam seva, so it's also seva. So if we do it properly, we benefit. But we should be careful then not to and do it too much for our sense gratification. At the beginning of one devotion service, then yes, one may offer to Krishna whatever he likes. He or she likes, right? So I like this, no, I like some pizza, I like some pasta, I like no some whatever rice, dal and sabji and I like it certain way and I like it like this and I will make it like that. So fine, okay, do it, it's bona fide, you do it and you offer it to Krishna now with the intention that well, okay, I'm supposed to do it, so then I will now offer it, please Krishna accept it. But then eventually, yeah, I'm going to take it. So we, the devotee on that stage, then yes, is offering the bhoga to the Lord on the level of Sakkhamabhakti. So there are some desires and so it's a, no, we can say materialistic devotee. But the mercy of the Lord is so great that even in this stage, the Lord still accepts the offering of the materialistic devotee and the devotee taking the prashat from the Lord, so then he benefits, he gets purified. And if he's sincere, so eventually, he will come to the stage of Nishkhamabhakti when he will be offering to the Lord whatever he likes. Whatever, no, he through pujaaris, through the acharyas, through the scriptures, no, he says what he wants. So that devotee on the Nishkham platform, then he is endeavoring to offer the Lord what he wants, how he wants it, what is the best and the Lord becomes even more pleased. Like example, right? So now there are festivals, one of the biggest festivals is Gauravam Puja. So then if you want to offer something to Krishna, then you know there are so many, no sweets which they are well known, right? Rasa Gulav, Rasa Malay, some Besan Ladu, Bundi Ladu, you can offer. But you may take also the extra endeavor and you may go to Braj and ask the bridge basis, what do they offer to Krishna now at the time of Gauravam Puja? That's the biggest festival, that's the most amount of sweets which they offer. So and then we can, we can start to little do some research. Also the next day, next time I would like to offer to Krishna now some other sweets. And then we may learn to make it, we may learn to like it and we may research now how it is done and then do it exactly, how it is done for the Lord, how the bridge basis do. We may see some recipes also in Govindarial Amrita. There are also many recipes there where Krishna says, no, what he wants, how he wants it. There are like Amrita Kelly, Karpura Kelly. There are so many like wonderful sweets which you don't hear about. Like for example, no, there are some very, very elaborate sweets. In Bengal, they used to have, now nobody makes it because it's very complicated. But in one cookbook, I read, it's considered one of the most aristocratic sweets in Bengal and now the most aristocratic sweet. It's really far out. It's called then yes, sarpuria and sarbaja. So there are two different sweets. But actually, no, the sar, that's the cream from the milk and that is taken and very slowly fried in ghee. Then it is soaked in sugar syrup. So then you get the sarbaja. And then no, sarpuria, you get when you take the sarbaja and you make some wonderful sandesh. Rose or no many kinds of sandesh and you put layers of sandesh in between the sarbaja. So you get layers, you get the fried cream, then you get the the sandesh, then another layer of cream, another sandesh and you can go a few layers. It's like a cake, but it's something which is really amazing. So Nowarvi was actually the most famous like in every city. I don't know how it is in North India, but at least in Bengal, every city in Bengal is known specifically for some kind of sweet. So Nowarvi is specifically known then for the sarbaja and sarpuria. So there are recipes. Now, how to make them, then there are still some descriptions somewhere. But if we want to please the Lord and we do the research for, okay, I want to make it for the Lord, to please the Lord. Now then we actually are on the platform Nishkham. When, when you serve prashat, when you serve prashat with the intention to please the person, had you, had you have experience that after seeing how the person is satisfied and you are doing it for the intention to satisfy the person, then actually you are not hungry? You don't, even after serving, when we are supposed to be really hungry, but actually you are not? You are satisfied seeing the other person satisfied? So bunkte bojaate, that's where the intention is properly done. So if with the intention, we offer to the Lord the bhoga, then that is no, it's another level, it's a satisfaction of a devotee. So there are ways how the service can be done. Anything can be offered to the Lord. It doesn't have to be only what we like, even though in the beginning, okay, but we should be endeavoring to find out what does he like, what can I offer to him? What is his favorite and also learn to like it. Like Chetanayam Apparum, he liked shak a lot, shukta, no, shukta shak, arribaji, so those are Bengali dishes. Now when we are offering something to Chetanayam Apparum, then why not to offer something which he likes? So then if it's shukta and shak, but that may not be immediately the taste for everyone, this shak. When Bhaktisiddhanta Sarasiprabha Parth, no, he was inaugurating When, uh, Bhaktisiddhanta Sarasiprabha Parvati, now, he was inaugurating the Gaudiyamad in Bhuvaneswar. So as a feast, they offered twenty-two kinds of shak preparations. That was the feast. That was the expression, now, because Chitnay Mahaprabhu, he likes shak, so let's offer him shak. So there is lau shak, umra shak, palak shak, now, bota shak. There are so many kinds of shak. Kutchu in Bengal, it's, it's famous. But some of the shaks, maybe a little bit exotic, strange, so you have to learn to like it. Because they are very good. But some appreciation, now, now, should be there. Or bitter. I don't know if, if you even make bitter. But shukta is excellent. It's a combination of bitter and sweet. It's an excellent combination, but it's mainly in Bengal. But it's excellent. Shabrapad, he was very fond of shukta. He gave even like a, now, specific recipe for making the shukta. So there are, there are things. And these things, we can offer for the pleasure of the Lord. And then, take the remnants, take prashad. Yeah. In Chetney Charita Amrita, Antya six, two hundred twenty-seven, it is stated, Jiwara lala se jey iti uttahaaya. Shishno daraparaayana Krishna nahe paya. That person who runs here and there seeking to gratify his palate, and who is always attached to the desires of his stomach and genitals, is unable to attain Krishna. This is heavy statement. And also, I have heard that Shabrapad saying that attachments to the material world keep you here. And that he had said, even the attachment to one rasa gulav will keep you in the material world. So eventually, now, we should give up our attachments. But the attachments, now, now, through the genitals, through the belly, all go through the tongue. So we have to work on the controlling the jiwa, the tongue. And what's also very, very interesting in this first verse, then tongue is mentioned two times, right? Vachavagam and jiwa vagam. So, because the tongue has two functions, to speak and to taste. So, how, how important is to start to control the tongue? That's the most important. So controlling once prajalpa. So it's not prajalpa, we talk Krishna kata. And controlling what to eat, so we don't eat anything not offered to Krishna, we only eat prashad. We should start with that, and the progress will be very quick. Okay. As stated before, the tongue, belly and genitals are all situated in a straight line, and they fall in the same category. Lord Chitnay has said, Bhala na kaibe, aara bhala na paribe. Do not dress luxuriously and do not eat delicious foodstuffs. Chetnya Charita Amrita, Antya six, two thirty-six. Those who suffer from diseases of the stomach must be unable to control the urges of the belly, at least according to the analysis. When we desire to eat more than necessary, we automatically create many inconveniences in life. However, if you observe fasting days like Ekadashi and Jamastami, we can restrain the demands of the belly. So, yeah, festivals, ekadashes. So that's, uh, that's very nice, now, to do, as long as we don't stop doing our Nitya Seva. So we just don't eat, it's beneficial for the belly, it's beneficial for the body, for the mind. But we should not stop doing our Nitya Seva. So on Ekadashi, now, many devotees do Nirjal. So then, that's, that's fine. Do one day Nirjal, now, continue doing your services, that's great. But now, now, some devotee is also, now, many devotees started the Bhishan Panchaga. So, the Bhishan Panchaga, now, there are few levels how it can be done. So as long as you eat, you can eat the Ekadashi Prashadam, which is the most common. And I think it should be there. Shabrapad specifically didn't mention to follow, but it can be done, now. But some devotees, they just go and eat only the panchagaga. So one day kaudang, one day, now, kaurin, one day ghee, one day yogurt, one day milk. That's, that's not, uh, really the proper way to do it. It should be not eaten alone, not only. And there are also some devotees, then, they do also like a five-day Nirjal. Which, it's also, it's, it's not prescribed anywhere. That's not to be followed necessarily this way. So we should be careful, now, not to start torturing the body. So the fasting is for the purpose, so we can focus more on Krishna. Not that we are not bodily conscious, I am doing it, now, I'm, I'm suffering, but I will make it. This is not good. Okay. Maybe if there are some questions now? You can start.
Thank you, Maharaj, it was very nice. And I was remembering Maharaj that, we, on the, on Gurdhan Pujya Day, we read, uh, you know, that pastime from Anandvindavanchampu. And there was a dish there, it was called Shikharini Rasala. And I was very surprised, you know, what is written in Shikharini Rasal? And when I, when I searched, then I found, you know, it is like a sherbat, you know? And so many, you know, they put cardamom, with ghee and this and that. And I was thinking, you know, well, maybe not this time, and someday I'm going to try it, you know, and see how it, you know, this exotic sherbat, you know, comes up. And...
You know, once we were in Braj, and then, uh, we walk, now, then, one day, we were, we came to, it was Baram Kund. Just before Kamiawan. Forgot the name. Anyway, so there was one Babaji, and he wanted to really do something nice for the boys. So he said, now, he will make a tandai. So, and he got ingredients. So, you put moori, right? Now, that's, that's normal. But then he put so many other spices. Now, white pepper, black pepper, saffron, cardamom, and, uh, yeah, I think some other things too. And, now, he made it, and it was like amazing, it was like something really far out. So the Bhrishbhasis, they know. Now, that's what they do for Krishna. Like, for example, now, I was in Nandagram, doing little research also about, now, how they cook there for Krishna. And now, one thing, what, what they were telling me, that before, then Madri Ashada starts cooking, then, uh, the, the pots, now Krishna likes Aguru very much. So, their pots, before cooking, they get smoked with the, now, with the Aguru smoke. They, they burn pieces of Aguru from the smoke, they, they smoke their pots, and they start cooking in those. So, there are so many things which we are not aware of, how they actually do, how they refine it, how they take it to completely different level, what we may even imagine. Yeah.
Thank you, Maharaj. So, uh, do you have any questions?
I think Shivani has a question for me.
Yes, Shivani Mathaji, go ahead.
Hari Krishna Maharaj, Dhanvrittra Nam, Ortus Sushla Pavat. Maharaj, I have a question regarding prasadham. When we offer to Krishna, sometime, like, plate looks so delicious that within our heart, we, we think that after Krishna having, maybe we will get chance to have that. But as we also hear that, even, even if we look with that, uh, with that intention at the plate, it get contaminated before Krishna has honoring it. So how to avoid that?
See, Krishna is very merciful, and he, he knows our intention. So, it may be that sometimes we just, now, may last over, but as soon as we recognize that we are lasting over the Bhoga, immediately just bring your mind back to the senses, and, and then, now, this is not for me, this is to offer to Krishna. So just be conscious. Now, try not to last over, and, now, do your best to offer it, now, with the best possible mind. If you keep doing that, that you keep catching yourself, and you keep, uh, constantly restraining yourself, now, lasting over, then you will be able to control it. So, in time, it will get better and better. So just don't worry about it. Now, keep offering Krishna the best, now, you can do for him. And, now, because you are doing it for him, your heart will get purified. And because of the heart being purified, then the intentions to, now, maybe be attracted by the Bhoga will be vasambhas. So just keep practicing it.
I'm Maharaj, sometime I, I also get the feeling like, I don't know whether Krishna will accept this or not, whether he will like it or not. So, I don't know if Krishna accept that, or, so...
You see, your intentions are pure, now, you are cooking it for him. Krishna will accept it, he doesn't have to, he doesn't, he is Atmarama, he doesn't need anything. But he is taking it just because, now, the devotee wants to offer to him. So, now, don't doubt that. When you are doing it, now, according to the prescribed, now, you are cooking in the green kitchen, you are cooking in the green pots, you are doing it with the intention to please Krishna, he will accept it. So, now, do it accordingly, how you are supposed to do, he will accept. And now, it's, I mean, there are some, some devotees. There was the, what was his name? There was a son of, of, I think it was Govinda, Govindadas. And he was a little boy. And the father, he was going for pilgrimage. So he told the son, okay, I'm going out for a few days. So you will be doing offering to the daitis. So you know how to do offering? Now, you have to just, now, then, uh, take the plate, whatever your mother cooks, you give it to the, now, in front of the daitis, and then, now, the daitis will eat, and after they eat, and then you can eat also. Okay? Simple enough. So then, he, he did that, he put the offering in front of the, in front of the daitis, and, uh, okay, eat, told Krishna. Nothing is happening. He said, come on, eat, eat, because if you don't eat, I cannot eat. So then, an innocent boy, now, and he was, I'm hungry, come on, eat. So, he was, he was like that. And what happened? Krishna actually, he accepted the prashad, he actually, now, physically was taking prashadam and now eating from it. So, then, uh, then the boy, okay, that's enough, okay, leave something for me. So, so then, okay, so Krishna ate, then, now, he ate, and everything was fine, now. And because he thought this is how the offering should be. So then, when the father comes, so, and then, now, he said, so did you offer a big meal to Krishna before you ate? Of course I did, now. And, now, how did you do it? Now, I gave, and then, now, Krishna was eating, and then whatever he left, then, now, now I also took. He said, ah, no, 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 this, this is not like that. He, he doesn't come literally and eat, now, this is, he eats with his eyes. So he sees, he eats that, and then, because he is the supreme lord, he can accept, now, he can eat through any of his sense. So that's what he does. So he just by seeing it, now, he sanctifies, and then it's prashad, and we can eat it. Yeah, but now he comes and, now, he was just eating it, now, from the, from the plates. No, 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 you are lying. And the boy said, no, I'm not lying. I, I don't believe you. So then, then the father, now, he said, okay, show it to me, prove it to me. And by the time already the whole bridge, now, came to know about it, and they came and now see what's happening. So then the boy, now, he takes, he takes the Bhoga in front of Krishna, and then, he eat now. Nothing. Please, now, this is for you, please eat it. Nothing. And then he was very desperate. And then, then the boy started to accuse Krishna. You're a rascal. Now, when I actually, now, I said the truth, that you are taking the prashad, nobody believes me. And now, when I need to prove it, that actually I was not lying, you are, now, you are letting me down. And Krishna, now, he, he actually appeared again, and he was so pleased with the boy. And just to show, now, how much devotion the boy has for, for the Lord, he got the, got the boy, he put him on his lip, and he was feeding him. So, everybody was astonished. So that's another level of offering, right? So, yeah.
Hah, Boli Mathaji, go ahead.
And Maharaj, my offering, is it mandated to ring the bell all the time since, because I am generally not able to ring the bell for all the mantras. I just ring the bell for first Guru Maharaj mantra, and then Prabhupada mantra, and then I just stand and sing other mantras.
Okay, you can do that. You can do that.
Okay. Thank you so much, Maharaj.
Hari Krishna.
Maharaj, there's a question from Ashok Prabhu, Ashamathaji, they are saying, Hari Krishna Maharaj, Dhanvrittra Nam. Most of the time, we kick, we cook what kids like, not Krishna. They have young kids, Maharaj. So they're saying, please advise how to change this consciousness as we feel guilty for this as well.
Now, no problem. See, you are trying to make the kids into vashnavas. So then, okay, what they like, you do, cook for them, but sometimes, now, introduce some dishes which Krishna likes, and make them like it. Now, like, see the shak, maybe, I don't know, once a month or, now, twice a month, make some shak preparation. Chitnay Mahaprabhu is favorite. Make the shukta, make some nimalu. Now, my experience with kids is that many, they come, like, to Gurukul, and they don't like so many things. Because they are accustomed to... Because they are accustomed to it. But we tell them, even if we don't want to eat it, but take a little bit. Just a tiny bit. Even the bitter or whatever it is, just take a little bit, at least. So then they take that, it's not too much for them. And the taste comes, the taste develops. After that, they appreciate it more and more and they just keep taking normal amount. So everything is just like a mental platform. They are not accustomed to it, they don't know what it is, so then they don't eat. But if they keep tasting it, they will take it. So my suggestion is, now start cooking things according to, well, what they like, it's fine. But keep adding sometimes some dishes, which specifically you know that Krishna likes, Chetamapru likes. And now, make them at least tasted. So they develop also the taste for what the lord likes.
Thank you Maharaj.
But there is no need to feel guilty that you are cooking something what the kids like. You are doing it, the kids are vaishnavas. So now you are trying to please vaishnavas and therefore you are doing the best for them, so it's bungte bhajaate and you offer it to Krishna, Krishna will be very happy. Like for a guest, some guests are coming and you know, those guests, they specific like some preparation. And it can be maybe, no, those devotees, they like pizza. Then make them pizza, the best, the way how you know that they like it the best. Offer that to Krishna, Krishna will be very happy. It's a vaishna sval.
Thank you so much Maharaj.
Okay.
Hare Krishna. Maharaj, there's a question, another question on the chat from Ekamathaji. She's saying, "Hare Krishna Maharaj, Dhyanurtarana. Thank you so much for the wonderful class, I have a question. It is written in here in the first lokadarshi, Chaitanya Mahaprabhu taught us to avoid very palatable dishes, even while, even if it's prasadham, so how do we understand it?"
Look, if it's something, first of all, if it's very palatable and you are offering something which is not palatable, you are going to be lusting over, likely, could be. So that's one. Other thing is, if something is very good, delicious, then it's very good chance that you keep overeating. And then if you overeat, and it doesn't really matter if it's prashad or not, the belly gets full. When you overeat, then other problems will come. You feel sleepy, you feel, you may be unable to do your services. So yes, Shrapada also encouraged, in the beginning devotee, just take as much as you want. In fact, shastra now has restrictions. For sanyasis, he can take only little. Vana prasta, a little bit more. Grihastas, they can take more than that. And brahmacharis, there is no limit how much they can take. No, so yes, brahmacharis, let them take, it's fine. But as they grow up, then they start figuring out, "Oh, if I eat too much for the feast, I cannot clean after the feast or I cannot do my services and tomorrow and the next day I will feel bad stomach and like that, maybe I should not eat that much." They will realize that. But in the beginning, okay, eat as much as you want. It purifies, it's prashadam. But now with the age, as the digestion not necessarily work the same way, so you start eating less. You focus more on the quality than the quantity. So the palatable dishes, especially if the tongue is not really controlled, then it's for me, I want it. So better just not to offer it. But if you are doing it for the pleasure of the lord, then there is no opulence which cannot be used. There is no prashadam which cannot be cooked. There's not enough opulence not to offer it to the lord, anyway. So if we can do it for the pleasure of the lord, then we should do it. Like in the temples, you see, they are trying to make everything nicely. So now some temples, they offer many savjis and very tasty savjis. So it's for the lord, for the pleasure of the lord. At home, and whatever you are doing, whatever you are cooking, that you offer to the lord and then you accept it. So there is no, not much to need to think about. And if there are guests, okay, you offer, you cook something elaborate for the guest. So you offer the palatable dishes to the lord, so then the guests can take it, it's not for you. You will also take it, but you are not premeditating that, "I'm going to cook this because I'm really lust after it today." No, you are doing it, "I want to please the guest, the vaishnavas coming." So therefore I want that and therefore please Krishna accept this as the offering, so then I can serve the vaishnavas. Or it can be kids, or can be, so I can serve my husband. It can be, but it should not be for us. We take the remnants. Yes?
Yes, thank you so much Maharaj, thank you so much, Dhyanurtarana. Hare Krishna Maharaj.
Hare Krishna.
Yes, last question Maharaj will take, Minakshim Mahataji, go ahead.
Hi Krishna Maharaj, Dhyanurtarana, thank you so much Maharaj. Although my question is already answered, like I was also about to say that you said ki we should cook for Krishna, but till now we don't know much about what Krishna likes. But if we keep it in a mind like while cooking that, okay, this devotee is coming or maybe this devotee like this one, so we can cook for them. And right now we can't go personally, but we can just send them through maybe some process. So it is the right way to think about that we can serve devotees better, keeping in that mind and serving Krishna then. Or what the devotees like, we are cooking for that purpose and then Krishna will accept it in that mood or it is not in a good mood to do that one.
Yes, it's absolutely perfect, it's good. You serve the vaishnavas. So you know what the vaishnavas like, you do. And if you become more absorbed in the service of the lord, like, do you know radhabalabi? It's kind of like kachuri, it's very famous in Bengal. Not like a dalpurie, you know dalpurie? So it's a specific one. It's with uradal, moori, hing, filling. So, and it's eaten with alu savji. Anyway, so that radhabalabi, it comes from the temple of radhabalaba in Bengal. And that recipe was revealed by Radharani to the Pujari, who was meditating on, he wanted to cook something what Krishna likes the most. So in the dream, she appeared to him, she gave the recipe. Now he started making and now it's known all over Bengal. So it comes from that specific temple of radhabalaba. So like that, if we are attentive and we want to find out to specifically serve the lord, then he will let us know how we can do it. And if it is not through the service to the vaishnavas, that's perfect. Just see what the vaishnavas like the most and do that for them. Please them, it's about them. Krishna will please automatically. Yes?
Yes, yes Maharaj, thank you so much. And you remember that a long time back in the time when he taught us three recipes, it was very nice and maybe in some future you want to learn more recipes. And you also saw the video that you are cooking kachuri on the recipient's day of Shiro Rupa and along with the kids and people who get it. It was so good to see those videos and it was so nice to see those videos again and again. Thank you so much Maharaj for all these things.
Hare Krishna.
Hare Krishna.
Hare Krishna, thank you so very Maharaj, so very much Maharaj. Such a wonderful NOI journey we are doing along by your association. So we heartily thanks Maharaj, we loudly chanting, "Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, 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 Hare, Hare. Hare Ram, Hare Ram, 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 Hare Ram. Rani Bharti Arjo Prithivathan Maharaj Ki Jaya, Shilpa Bhagwan Ki Jaya." Thank you so much Maharaj.
Hare Krishna.
Hare Krishna, so thank you everyone for joining us in the session. And apnko, puri recipe nahi a rahe, but maine thodu si chat mein da diya radhabalabi. Puri, I saw, so you can search on the internet, I'm sure there must be others' versions also. There is a value of association of such pure devotees because we don't know when we are going to get some gem. So thank you so very much and we'll meet again on Friday. Hare Krishna. You're saying something, Rani Prabhu?
No Prabhuji.
Friday, oh yes, Friday, we are going to start a new topic on Shrimad Bhagavatam, Ideal Family Life. I'm reading these days that particular chapter. So our rational etiquette seminar is over from Vajinder Krishna Prabhu. And so we'll be starting from seventh canto. The two chapters, one chapter 11 and one chapter 14, which is for grasta. Very wonderful chapters, in which Maharaj Udyushkar is asking Narad, "How should a grasta live and what is the duty of a husband-wife like this?" So I thought I'll share with all of you. So from Friday, we will start reading Bhagavatam, these particular canto and chapters. Hare Krishna, All Grista Prabha.
Thank you so much Prabhuji, Hare Krishna.
Thank you Prabhuji, Hare Krishna.